So the meeting is ready to go. It looks like Haley, is that right? I saw the recording coming on. Proceeding up. Okay, all right. Thank you. Right, so now I have the time in 7:01 and I will go ahead and call this regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. If you could please see and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. For all. Thank you. Sorry, there's a little bit of delay on my end. I'm not sure if that's for everybody. But if you could go ahead and take the roll, Mr. Houston.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
And Mr. Raymert. All are present.
I have on the agenda purpose of the meeting, but this is just our regularly scheduled German Township December meeting. After that, we have visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments?
All potch eye. Everybody.
I was unable to hear him. Okay, I thought maybe it was my computer. Yeah, we don't have the video view anymore. And it was very difficult to hear you, Mr. Cross. We can hear you though, Mrs. Sewell.
We lost.
Video. Yes.
Somebody else.
Okay, I'm going to try to switch my computer from my Wi-Fi to my hotspot. So give me just a second.
Okay. Wonder for you, Mr. Cross, if it's a Wi-Fi issue on your end, I can still see the same people I could see before. I just am unable to see you now, Mr. Cross. Now I can see you.
I got to you, Mrs. Reed. We've lost.
It's not working well. I know Google was messed up earlier today. I don't know if that has anything to do with this at all, but while we're waiting on Mr. Cross, do we have other visitor comments? I'm not seeing anyone else unmute.
Trustee Reed.
Yes.
Trustee Reed.
Yes.
Yes, this is Kurt Jacoby. I was wondering, I had had a conversation with Larry Wiseman of the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And in that conversation, this goes back clear to September. He mentioned that they were planning the projections, I think, for the next five years and said that he was, they were looking for input from the townships and what he described, it was kind of a bottom-up type of planning effort. And then he mentioned that he still needed to talk to the township and concluded for himself that he needed to speak with you. Has that happened?
I have received no correspondence from him unless he would have called the township, but I have not gotten any messages or emails or anything from him at all, unfortunately.
Okay.
I can reach out to him. Did you say his last name was Wiseman?
Yeah, Haley has his contact information.
Okay. So I'm not sure if she can hear me right now, but I'll reach out to her maybe after the meeting if she can't and see if she can get me that. Did you say that was the Planning Commission?
Yeah, he's the township contact for that. And I just was kind of asking a zoning question for for reference, but he dropped that comment while we were discussing.
No, and you would have thought if that was in Sep- Yeah, you would have thought if that was in September, I would have heard something, but unfortunately I have not. But I will I'm making a note right now to reach out and see and hopefully get some information or clarification about that.
Mr. Jacoby, just for the official action, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, it is 12955 Harris Road.
Thank you very much. We all know where you live, but that's just needed.
I apologize. I should have asked him before I answered the question. I'm sorry, Mr. Houston. Mr. Cross, I can see you now. I'm sorry, Mr. Jacoby, were you finished?
Yes, I was.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Cross, I can see you and I think we might be good to go now.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, just a couple of things. Montgomery County has concluded its program to distribute CARES Act funds to help residents pay their utility bills. The final numbers for area code 45327 are DPNL 107 accounts served for a total of $59,757. Vectren 24 accounts served for a total of $3,431. So hopefully informing our residents of the program allowed them to get some utility bill relief. Next, the Ohio Department of Taxation reached a tentative agreement with the Montgomery County Auditor's Office to raise residential property values 15% in 2021. That's up from a proposed 7.4 increase. However, Germantownship was already set for an increase of residential property values of 19.1%. So it really didn't affect us. So if those changes in value hold up, the township may see an increase in future property tax income. Also, the average value of farmland or the CA current agricultural use program for farmland in Montgomery County should be about 25% lower than in 2018 to 2020. So Jake, especially your father, I'm sure is happy to hear about that. So it's good for our farmers, not so good for the township revenue. And the CAUV program allows farmland to be taxed at its agricultural value instead of the full market value. So those are kind of things that eventually may affect the township. Next, I want to say that I met Shawna Close last week and I want to thank the chief and Lori Roebuck and whoever was involved in hiring her because I think she's going to be a great asset to the township. And finally, I want to be the first one to congratulate Lori Roebuck on her upcoming retirement. She was invaluable to me as far as information when I was in the BZA and the trustees and on the zoning commission. And I wish her the best of luck in her retirement. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do we have any other visitor comments? See any other people unmuting at this time? And I don't, it doesn't look like we have call-in people this evening. Okay, I'm gonna go turn it over to Mr. Houston for the fiscal officer report then.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. And once again, good evening, everybody. I have, as I do most months, several things, so we'll move through them quickly. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. We have the minutes of the November 9th regular meeting and the minutes of the November 18th special meeting, and that was the meeting concerning the JED. Any corrections to either one of those?
Motion to approve as submitted both sets.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion of the motion before we vote? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. The next item is the review of the financial reports. And I have previously sent to you, the reports has to be in the November. The fund status report for November 30th, the year-to-date cash summary by fund through November 30, the November receipt listing and the November payment listing. And in my written report, I did make note of several items and I want to go ahead and mention those for those that are listening. On the receipt listing, item number 188 is $7,556 and this was from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation and was the second 2020 dividend we've received. And this one was represented slightly more than 100% of the premiums that we paid for the 2019 policy year. Receipt number 193 in the amount of $302,117.57 which is net of the collection fees came from the Montgomery County Auditor and it was our final August settlement. There was also in that number a $4,048.80 payment for trailer tax. I wasn't even aware there was one until I saw that. Something new I've learned. Receipt number 199 in the amount of $918.18 also came from Montgomery County Auditor. And as I've mentioned in the past, all CARES Act funds that were not appropriated by all the entities in Montgomery County were returned to Montgomery County Auditor and then redistributed. And this represents our portion of those funds that were redistributed to us. That will be the final payment we will receive on CARES Act funds. Deposit, receipt number 200, $10,000 even, came from the Germantown Union Cemetery and it was their semi-annual loan payment from the 2006 land purchased. The trustees at that time did loan them funds to make that land purchase. And then receipt number 207 in the amount of $98,230.58 came from the state of Ohio and represented the second half homestead and rollback payment for 2020. On the payment listing, there were five items I want to make note of. Warrant 5274 in the amount of $367.45 was paid to Premier Paper Systems and that was for the touchless paper dispensers and supplies and that was paid using CARES Act funds. Warrant number 5288, an even amount of $1,000 was paid to First Church of God. It was the donation to the Sunshine in a Bag ministry that came out of the Fouts Trust Fund and was approved at the November meeting. Warrants 5303 and 5304, total of $2,401.25 a net of withholdings was paid to Jeremy Holbrook for his 120 comp hours. Again, you approved that at the November meeting. Warrant 5306 in the amount of $10,307.25 was paid to First National Bank of Germantown and that was our semi-annual Valley View Water Sewer District loan payment. And finally, warrant number 5316 in the amount of $49,022.93 paid to Gledhill Road Machinery and that was the final payment on the 2021 dump truck. This was for the snow and ice package. And because of Jeremy's hard work getting that invoice quickly, we received a 2% discount as we paid that invoice within 15 days. And with that in mind, any other questions on the financial reports? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the reports and authorize the payment of all the November bills, which includes warrants 50272 through 50316 and vouchers 613 through 707.
I'll make a motion to approve the November financial and those warrants and vouchers.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Mr. Stubbs beat you, Mrs. Reed. Any discussion of the motion before we vote?
Two quick questions. On the $10,000 receipt for the semi-annual loan, how long does that last? Do you know how many more years or periods remaining?
I don't have that directly in front of me. I think there are two or three more years, but I could be wrong.
In my remembrance, and I know I've got a document somewhere, is it's about the same period of time left on the Water Sewer District payments. So I just wonder if this seems we're canceling out for that period, but just something to note, just to keep in mind that, you know, we may have a deficit of 20,000 when that runs out. Hopefully the sewer district kind of syncs up with that timing. Okay.
I know the sewer district goes out to 2025, but I do not exactly remember the cemetery loan period.
There's a couple there's a couple of years difference in the length of it. The water and sewer debt is longer than the the payments from the cemetery by a year or two.
Clear. Thank you.
I'd just like to jump in here for a minute if I could, Mr. Raymert, this is Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica. I don't remember exactly what the balance is on that cemetery loan, but they pay that based on their own cash flow. So if they have a slow year with, you know, very few burials and things like that and can't afford it, the board has never pushed them to try and make those payments. So we have had years where they've maybe only made one instead of two and even years where they've made none, so.
Yeah, that just happened. That just happened recently. So that is something to keep in mind as well.
Okay, clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keener, for pointing that out. Any further discussion before we vote on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, moving on. Probably later this week or next week, we will receive the third dividend this year from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And this third dividend is part of a total $5 billion distribution by the Workers' Comp Bureau to its policyholders. And similar to the dividend we received in November, this dividend is based on premiums paid in 2019. And I anticipate that this next dividend will be in excess of $25,000. You'll recall, I just said a little while ago that the last dividend we received fully paid for the premiums from 2019. And that's important because I recently received a bulletin from the Auditor of State detailing how to account for all of the Bureau of Workers' Comp dividends. It stated, "We are to return the dividend back to the fund where the original payment was made. Once the fund has been made whole, any remaining amount may be deposited into the general fund." And since the November dividend that we received made every fund whole for 2019 premiums, this entire third dividend will go into the general fund. And was that clear? Any questions about that point? Because that's a pretty significant piece of information. Okay, moving on. You requested at last month's meeting that I poll the township employees to determine if there is any interest in adding the new voluntary employee benefits that are now being offered by Burnham and Flower through Colonial Life. And these are critical illness insurance, accident insurance, and individual short-term disability insurance. I did not receive any positive feedback and I recommend that you do not add those optional benefits. And since there's nothing that you've approved, I don't think there's any action you need to take to disapprove them. So I think we'll just let that one die on the vine. Sometime later this meeting, it can be now or later on, you will need to approve spending the remainder of the coronavirus relief fund money. This will need to be done by resolution. The amount increases every month with the interest that it earns on it. So I would ask that the resolutions simply state how the remaining funds are to be used and not specify an actual amount. So far, you've spent the $367 for the touchless paper dispensers and you've approved $4,481 for the touchless toilet, urinal, and faucets. And you've approved up to $2,000 to purchase the video camera and the large screen TV for hybrid in-person virtual meetings. The fund balance at November 30 was $143,978.60, but we have not yet paid the plumber for the touchless restroom items. And we have not at that point paid for the video camera and TV and those other items. So we can do this motion now or later. I think Mr. Raymert will want to talk about the coronavirus funds as it relates to the sound, audio portion of what we're going to do for the meeting. So if you want to wait till later, I'm good with that. But we can't let the meeting close without doing that.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys, Mr. Reed, Mr. Stubbs, how you guys want to handle. I've got a couple of things on that that'll definitely touch this, but I can do it right now and we can knock them out. It's however you want to manage.
I'd just do it now.
Okay. If you guys are good with that, let me run through it. So as he mentioned, we approved the $2,000 for the video. The $2,000 was approved. I think I spent, and Mark, you have the details, hopefully you have the invoice and everything. The TV we got for $569.74 on Black Friday, a 70-inch television and the webcam for $488.33, which is actually slightly less than what AVI had quoted us. And so that brings the total to $1,058.07 versus the $2,000, so about almost $1,000 under spend on that. The cables, I'm going to donate them, whatever cables we need to connect everything. The only thing I could see is running into needing that we said we would punt for now is that TV stand and anything else to maybe aesthetically make the cables run a certain way, but it's going to be de minimis, but that'll run into January. So that takes care of the AV piece of it. Now, on the telephone, last meeting, we had approved Spectrum. What we had all thought at the time, and this is my fault because I led us to believe this, was that Spectrum could give us the Starfish system that we wanted for free. They originally tried and charged 500. We negotiated for free. And then the only thing that they were wanting to do was upgrade our seven lines with Spectrum to unified communications. Once we started talking it in more detail to execute it and brought them in, we met with Jeremy, Mr. Houston, Lori, and Shawna at the Township Building. It became clear that we have a very complex phone system that I was not aware was as complex and that every line is entangled in the complexity to some degree. And the complexity is somewhat needed. It's a sufficient plan. I don't want you to feel like that we've got something we don't need. I think the key to understand is we use Pro Long Call services on top of our Spectrum lines and that helps Lori and Shawna be able to manage where the calls get directed to and some other services that we have. And it became clear that, you know, Spectrum wanted to do a few additional things if they were to, if we were to go with Spectrum. We had them quote several different options. But at the end of the day, it was a lot of complexity and not a significant change in call savings or anything to do the things that they wanted to do to provide the fish. And so after a second meeting at the Township with the Township participants, we agreed that it was best to probably move past the Spectrum offer and revisit the Pro Long Call offer, which is to just purchase outright the Starfish system. So I went back to Pro Long Call and the original quote was $646 for just the Starfish as a one-time fixed cost. I went back to them today, or well, I guess it was Friday, I reached out to Chris there and you know, did that include the three additional speakers that would go around the table to broaden the Starfish capability than, rather than just the initial Starfish and a couple of other things. And I also asked her if she could do it cheaper than the 646 originally quoted and told her that we had competitive bids out. She promised to come back today and she did, just said that she wasn't able to get that approved today, that she would come back to me pretty soon. I told her we probably had special meetings this month. But she's going to come back as soon as possible with the final cost on that and let us know what they can do. But I think what will happen, if you guys are okay with it, is she will come back with something before our special meeting and we'll be able to approve that and potentially get the order in and paid for and use that as CARES funds to get the Starfish system, but we will not be moving forward Spectrum based on the Pro Long Call and the system that we have in place at the Township today. So that's the only thing I have to update you on the CARES funds. We may need another. And I don't know, Mr. Houston, what your suggestion is, if you want to wait until do a specific number, if you want to do more like $1,000 like we did on the television audio equipment and I just come in under that and do the same type of thing with this so we can move quickly when we get a response back from Pro Long Call. I guess that's how I would recommend it, Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs, is we go ahead and disapprove $1,000. That way we can move quickly to pay for the Starfish system and then we're we're set and paid with CARES funds for, to get us capable of doing teleconferencing after, you know, we go back in the Township.
Mr. Raymert, I think that would work very well to approve up to a number and $1,000 sounds like a good number to use. And then we can then say, do a resolution to approve the remainder of the fund once all these bills come in for whatever purpose you then decide as a group.
Which I think.
Ready to make your resolution on the Pro Long Call, it'll be 2020-42.
That's fine. I think what we we'll get there after this, I guess, is just that we had agreed to align or thought that we would use that towards the police fund because we were able to utilize those funds in that manner. So we'll get to that. I guess the first thing I'll do is I would like to propose resolution 2020-42 to have $1,000 up to $1,000 purchase of a Starfish audio conferencing, teleconferencing system from Pro Long Call during the month of December.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mine's delayed for some reason today. I'm not sure if it's me or what's going on, so I apologize.
No apology needed. Any discussion of resolution 2020-42? If you're ready to vote, I will call the roll. Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Raymert. Resolution 2020-42 is adopted. Now, if you would like to discuss how to use the remainder of the coronavirus funds, we can do so at this point in time if that works for you.
Just really quickly, I mean, I know Lori's not on the call and I'll definitely be talking to her before her retirement, but I just want to mention how instrumental Lori was in this situation is a perfect example of how much tribal knowledge that Lori has that the rest of us are going to be at a deficit when she walks out because the understanding of the systems we had in place and how they interacted and what was necessary. I don't know that without those two meetings and having Lori there, any of us would have been able to explain it in the near term. And Mr. Houston, you can agree or disagree on that one.
I fully agree.
So the other piece, I'm inclined to spend the rest of the budget on police funds unless you guys have other thoughts, but I know we're getting down to the wire on this.
No, I thought we already agreed to do it, spend it on police funds and that's totally fine with me. And a totally appropriate use.
Do you need a resolution for this, Mr. Houston?
Yes, we will. We'll call that 2020-43.
Okay, I'll introduce resolution 2020-43 to spend the remaining balance of the CARES funds towards the police fund.
I will seconds.
Any discussion of resolution 2020-43? If you're ready to vote, I'll call the roll. Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
And Mr. Raymert.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-43 is approved and we have now authorized the spending and for all of the money from the coronavirus relief fund. And this is an outstanding decision, I think, that you all have made. Okay, moving on. During November, I received and responded to two public record requests. Both of those requests were to receive the resumes of the applicants for the alternate position on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have received an election ballot for two open seats on the OTARMA Board of Directors. OTARMA stands for Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority and it is the entity that we get our insurance through. This ballot must be postmarked by January 15th of '21. The four candidates running for two open seats are Carolyn DeStefani from Sugar Creek Township in Green County, Marcia Funk from Brownhelm Township in Lorraine County, Brian S. Morris of Franklin Township in neighboring Warren County, and Nick Schwab from Riley Township in Butler County. And it's very interesting to note that three of the four candidates come from southwest Ohio townships. If you would like to submit a ballot, I will need a motion to approve which candidates you want to. If you would like to, um, submit a ballot, I will need a motion to approve which candidates you want to, uh, vote for.
I would say I defer on this one to past experience on what we do. I, I read through all four candidates. I think they're all sufficient. I don't feel strongly one way or the other, so I don't, I don't have a preference on whether we vote in this situation.
I know in prior years, the trustees have taken-
I don't recall-
Submitted their ballot. Go ahead, Mrs. Reed.
I was gonna say, I don't recall, um, voting on this, or maybe this being brought before all of us. And I don't recognize these individuals' names, so it's not, um, like Mr. Raymer said, it's not something that I feel strongly about. So I am comfortable with not voting, just because I don't know these individuals.
Yeah, I guess i- if we want to vote, leave that up to Mr. Stubbs, your experience. But if we want to vote, there's two of them that are incumbents, two of them that are new. I guess the question would be, uh, you know, are we happy with the service we're getting from OTARMA or not?
I've had no problems with OTARMA since I started. Mr. Keener might have a comment from his time, I don't know.
It says, you said we can wait until January fifteenth, correct?
Yes, our meeting in Jan-, well, we haven't set our schedule, but if we stick with the second Tuesday, excuse me, second Monday, it would be January eleventh.
Okay. I'd like to defer until that time if possible.
Well, I'll, I'll kick in here since Mr. Heaton invited me to. There, there's only two choices for our property and casualty insurance, if that's what you're talking about. And if you're not, I apologize, I actually just walked back in the room and heard you say something about OTARMA and my name, so.
Yeah, it was, it was over along the lines, Mr. Keener of, uh, we're, we're potentially voting for the candidates, uh, the board for OTARMA. Two, two of them are incumbents, two of them are new or would be new to OTARMA. So I guess I was just saying to help inform the decision, are we happy with how OTARMA is performing with the, performing with the current board? So just if you had any experience with happy or sad on, on how they had treated us or how we'd managed with them before.
Okay, so, um, you know, dealing with them over four years, I never had a problem with them. Whenever I've had any questions, I mean, they've always been, uh, responsive. And, you know, they are helping right now with the current, uh, situation as far as an insurance claim. Uh, and I've been very helpful in that regard. And they've also done a nice job. Um, we get a, a rebate check back from them as well. Plus, they also provide grants back to the fire department, or not to the fire, the police department, um, for different equipment and so on. So, yeah, I would say overall, they're, they're very, uh, customer oriented as far as the Townships are concerned.
I think that's helpful. I mean, they, they made a decision to go ahead and, uh, kick it to Gene where he's meeting to make a decision, but that helps us for background then.
Mr. Keener, thank you for the comments. Just so I have it official, give me your address, please.
Uh, seventy-eight sixty-five Jamaica.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, well, I'll bring that up again at the January meeting. All right, moving on. In recent years, the trustees have held three special meetings during the Christmas and New Year's holidays. The first meeting last year held on December twenty-seventh was an initial budget review meeting. The second meeting held on New Year's Eve last year was a final budget review and also included approvals of, of several year-end items. And the third meeting on January second earlier this year was, was the organizational meeting for twenty twenty. And it included numerous resolutions and motions. Now, we need to set the dates for those dates and times. We can perhaps skip one of those if you'd like to discuss the proposed, initial, uh, discussion of the proposed budgets for twenty twenty-one tonight. Or we can do it in a special meeting. We could even do it Wednesday night. Uh, no, it's not on the agenda, so we can't do it Wednesday night. We could, but we might have a, another special meeting to do that if you don't want to do it tonight. And it's really your call. I will point out that all departments have submitted their draft budgets to you three trustees. So you do have them in your possession. Plus I submitted mine.
So, Mr. Heaton, a couple of things, um. I, I, I was able to check all, all the funds except for a handful, like two that you, I believe, managed. One of them being the general fund, which obviously is important. So I know you'd sent at least one email saying you have them all now, but I couldn't locate the first one that you had sent. So I, I guess, can you give me the date of that, just to make sure I can go back and grab that? Because I'm, there's only two, maybe three funds, and you, you would obviously recognize which email you sent. So I need to look at that, so I'm not prepared to, to definitely do those three funds tonight. The only other comment I had, I, I really appreciate the analysis you put in here, uh, each one of the funds, even the road and, and police funds. Uh, giving some historical perspective and those types of things, I think it's good. Um, it's definitely helpful. The only question I have is, on your funds that you prepared by yourself, um, I really like how you laid it out to show a beginning balance, uh, what the anticipated revenues and what the anticipated payments, and then an ending balance off of that. I think on the road and the police funds, it just shows, uh, a listing of the budgeted expenditures. Um, is it possible to do the same kind of thing you did where we put a beginning balance as well as anticipated revenues on those? Um, I think it adds a lot of context and definitely helpful on understanding, uh, what we really plan to do for the following year.
Sorry, I was looking up the answer to your question on the data of the email. I haven't found it. Um, absolutely, I can do that and, and actually considered doing that, um, once I did these last few little funds that I sent you. And I can put that together, especially if we're not going to discuss it tonight, that gives me a little bit of time to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have much time, obviously, you're not able to discuss these things, uh, offline as trustees. So I, I'll just make a few comments as o- other people are reviewing them as we get ready to start, uh, um, approving these budgets on a go-forward basis. I, I, I think the key, you know, we, we had met individually, Mr. Heaton and I, when I was on board and getting, uh, up to speed with each one of the, the budget owners, about what's the historical spend look like. We looked at the last five years on each one of these budgets, um, what those balances have been doing over that period of time. And, um, you know, there was, I think, some insightful things out of that. And, and one of the things I'll say is that, um, you know, the police fund, uh, we are spending what we're receiving, just like the road fund. Both of those are in very similar situations that, you know, the money that's coming in is getting spent every year. There's not an accumulation of money and there's not a, a deficit growing or we're taking away from the balance that's there. But I think it's very important for us as trustees to understand what that balance is to start the year. And that we try our best to try to end the year with at least that much in the balance, so we're not overspending the revenues. And so I think adding the beginning balance along with the anticipated revenues and the anticipated expenses, helps us keep track of, are we planning to dig into that fund balance? Or are we actually planning to add to that fund balance by the end of the year? And, and I think, uh, and I'm definitely obviously open to discussion or, or thoughts or input from others. But, but my, my way of thinking through this is that we should do best as fiscal stewards to try to make sure that we're at least leaving a remaining fund balance that we started the year, unless we have a very specific reason, such as, uh, an anticipated shortfall in revenue that is only a one-time-only item or, or whatever it may be. But, um, I think the perspective that Mr. Heaton had added in some of his budgets, I think we need to add across the board and pay, pay close attention to that. Okay, so that's all I have.
Mr. Raymert, I just forwarded to you the, um, email that has the general fund and the trash fund.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, and I'm sure I have it somewhere, I just missed it in the mound of emails this month, so thank you.
No problem.
And I, I want to jump in there, there here, if it's okay. Um, we, I guess, since I've been on board, um, have had those three meetings and it is a lot of meetings for December and the beginning of January. I do think that the budget meetings are very important. I mean, making sure, um, the best way that we can is important. So as, um, overwhelming, I guess, as it is to have all of those meetings, um, I think having a discussion about them, and I personally think, and I don't know, Mr. Raymert, Mr. Stubbs, or Mr. Heaton, but if we could, I, I had it approved through, um, Mr. Peterson, the attorney, about the trustees and Phil Skolfs are being allowed to meet in person and having the public, um, virtual. I think that in years past, when we have had these budget meetings, um, it has been really beneficial to be, um, to meet in person and have really, uh, in-depth detailed conversations about this. And, uh, I just find, I think that might be beneficial too. I don't know if that's something that you guys are interested in doing, but that's just my, my thoughts.
I think there's a lot of, um, merit to what you said, Mrs. Reed, because we can have a, a, a easier flow of conversation if the four of us are there, as well as Chief Anzik, uh, myself, of course, and, um, Mr., Mr. Holberg. As we go through each of the fund budgets, but we will definitely then have to have the, um, the visitors remotely. We can do that. So I think the thing to do is, if you hopefully all have your calendars on you, we can select the meeting night at this moment.
Mr. Heaton, would this be for the, um, actually just got, uh, for when we're reviewing the budget, the first one?
Well, we had two budget meetings last year. We had one on the twenty-seventh and one on the thirty-first. If you want two meetings, we can do that. If you want to throw it all into one meeting, we do need to meet as close to year-end as possible to approve all of the final appropriations after we spend everything we're going to spend. So if it's not the thirty-first, it would need to be the thirtieth, the twenty-ninth, somewhere in that period of time.
Okay.
But if you want to do two reviews, then we should do one prior to that.
I am comfortable with one, however, I will leave that up to Mr. Raymer and Mr. Stubbs.
I'm fine with one. How about Wednesday, uh, December thirtieth?
That looks good for me. And, and-
Should we do it at seven o'clock?
That's fine.
All right, so we'll do one budget meeting and hopefully we won't have too many changes. Uh, you actually won't approve the budget until the first meeting, we, in the organizational meeting in January. Uh, so it's, there are some changes we made. We will have it a couple of days to make those. But it would just be tweaking changes, not wholesale changes. Okay, let's go with Wednesday, December thirtieth, seven PM for a budget and to approve all the year-end items. And then we'll have to set an organizational meeting. Last year, again, it was done on January second. But it should probably be done before everybody goes back to work.
And I will also remind you guys, um, about the January seventh meeting.
How about Monday, January fourth?
I do not have any other boards scheduled that day.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall that in years past, we have done these earlier in the day. I'm comfortable with doing it anytime throughout that day if, uh, if need be. That would be helpful in getting-
Yeah, we've done typically in the mornings, but the, because the New Year is on a Friday. Uh, I didn't want, didn't figure we'd want to come here on the weekend, so Monday, the fourth was the next, uh, best day. And I'm fine with the, uh, morning or the evening.
Budget reasons or, okay.
It doesn't matter to me either way. I do know that that is a city council night, so if you do meet in the evening, whether that creates a problem for you, Mrs. Reed, since Mr. Reed will be at city council.
No, it's fine.
Uh, to Haley's point, is, is the seventh too late? Did I miss that? Do we couldn't add it on to the seventh meeting? Or do we need to do it at a specific time in the first couple of days?
If we waited till the seventh, I will not be able to pay any bills until after we meet. Now, is that a major issue? I can't answer that. That, if Mr. Keener is still on the call, maybe he has some insight to that from his prior experience. I've not gone through a year-end, so I don't really know, uh, what issue that might cause.
Uh, uh, it's fine, it's fine. We can do, uh, as, as Mr. Stubbs mentioned, the fourth, I'm okay on the fourth, so whatever you guys want to do, it's fine with me.
Is seven PM on the fourth, good for everybody?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, very good. We've got a plan. Moving on, I, I wanted to let you know that I did attend the-
Can I interrupt you real quick, Mr. Heaton?
Move up, yes.
Do we want to do that one in person, like we're doing the budget one? Or do we want to do that one virtually?
I would suggest in person with us and virtual with the, with the, um, citizens.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Heaton. Sorry to interrupt you.
And by that time, we might have our equipment in place, which will make that even easier. That would be terrific if, by both of those meetings, if we could. Sorry about that. Okay, moving on. Um, I wanted to let you know that I did attend the Montgomery County Township Association Virtual Holiday Gala on, um, Nov- uh, November eighteenth. Uh, it wa- it was not a, a, a great event, since it was virtual, not like last year where we had a nice dinner and, and we, people were sworn in, it was very impressive. This wasn't quite the same, but they did the best they could. I also attended a virtual Montgomery County Township Association Fiscal Officer Meeting on December third. And most significantly, I attended an all-day, uh, UAN Year End Update webinar all day long on, uh, December first. And I also attended the Montgomery County Auditor Carl Key's Annual Update Webinar on December tenth. And I know just this past weekend, I sent you some, um, talking points from the auditor's, uh, update webinar. So you have those in your emails. Uh, it was reported last month that the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference has been canceled as an in-person event. But in its place, the OTA will hold an online conference February first to February fifth. The cost is sixty-five dollars. I've already signed up to attend. Hopefully, uh, the three of you will do so. As I understand it, you actually don't even have to watch them live. Uh, you can come back later and watch them. But before you, um, pay your money to do that, you might want to verify that point. But that's how I understand it, which will help those of you who work maybe not have to take off work. Um, don't, I don't want you to forget, we have a special meeting, uh, Wednesday night of this week, six o'clock for this meeting. It will be in person for the Township Trustees and virtual through WebEx for all visitors. And this will be, of course, a discussion of the JED with Ger- Germantown, Farmersville and Jackson Township. And finally, and then I'll be done, I want to acknowledge Lori Rohrbach's upcoming retirement, just as Mr., uh, Cross has done. Uh, she will be retiring on December thirty-first after twenty-nine years with the Township. And unfortunately, I don't think Lori's on the call tonight, but I want everyone to know, I want her to know that everyone in Germantown Township, both all of the employees here, and I fully believe all residents of the Township, thank you, Lori, for your outstanding service to the Township for all these years. Personally, I'm indebted to Lori for her assistance to me as I came on board this year as fiscal officer. And I hope that she enjoys many wonderful years of retirement. And I wish her and Andy great success as they start their mission year with their church, uh, in twenty twenty-one. And I've known Lori since we were in high school together. But with the past nine months working here together, I certainly feel closer to her and have many wonderful, have had many wonderful conversations with her. And I will miss our time together. I recommend that she not be a stranger and she come back to visit us often. And with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Heaton. I, I believe I saw Chief unmute there. I think he is up next.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I have a very short report. Uh, first of all, our CLIA accreditation, on December eleventh, we completed, uh, our annual review. And according to Lori Rohrbach- And according to Lori Rohrbach, it was just mentioned, this was the smoothest view we've had since we first became accredited, so that's a great thing. A lot of her own hard work is what made it so smooth. Um, next, I'd like to uh, address the COVID uh, coronavirus here in twenty twenty. It's adversely affected our relationship that we forge with our uh, citizens, our res- residents. Um, by preventing us to have the events, and I'm hoping that this coming year, we can reestablish some of those connections. And I want everyone to be well, stay safe, and have a great holiday. Um, and last, uh, in addressing Mrs. Rohrbach, I have been here for twenty-six of the twenty-nine years that she's been with the township. Wonderful to work with, as everyone has said, very knowledgeable, and we wish her the best in her retirement. At the end of this month. And that concludes my report.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Mr. Holbrook.
I'll try to make this brief. Um, first item on my agenda is, uh, we did take delivery of our new twenty twenty-one international dump truck. Um, had Steve Lainhart out of Carlisle come over and letter it with the township logo and the unit number. Um, last week, so that is up and running and serving the township. The second item is the uh, Dills Plumbing that the Township Trustees approved to do the. Uh, fixture installs for the touchless fixtures within the men's women's restrooms is completed. Um, I have not received a bill from him just yet, so once I get that, um, I will quickly forward that on to Mr. He stand. Um, excuse me, the third item, um, Little Twin Road. On the north end that runs parallel to Twin Creek has started to show some erosion problems. Um, I did contact the Army Corps of Engineers and got approval through them to work under the Nationwide Permit Number Thirteen. Um, to place stabilization stone um, along that bank to try to mitigate any further erosion. So uh, if any of the board members received any inquiries uh, or questions concerning that work that's being performed there. Uh, just forward their questions on to me and I'd be more than willing to. Uh, answer them or forward any information or correspondence that I've had with the Army Corps of Engineers um, to them. Um, other items, uh, kind of under, going back to the first item is now that we've taken possession of the new truck. I need to have a resolution passed to declare the old two thousand four International Forty-two Hundred Dump Truck as excess. To just be disposed of uh, using govdeals.com.
I, I will make that resolution. I believe if I'm correct, Mr. Houston, that's Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three?
That is correct.
Perfect. As I will make Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three to place the dump truck onto govdeals. Um, I apologize, Mr. Holbrook, I was not, I lost the year. What was the year of the dump truck?
Uh, two thousand four.
The, the two thousand, the two thousand four International Dump Truck on to govdeals.
I will second.
Is there any discussion of Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three before we vote?
Can we just make sure we pass on all fees and costs to the buyer?
I just hope to get a lot of money.
I, I know on govdeals, you can pass the fees on, uh, if it's set up with, that way prior to the sale. So any, any admin costs or whatever, if we could add that to the buyer, not to our cost, if that would be, if possible.
Yes, Mr. Stubbs, that's uh, the way our govdeals account is set up now. Um, it wasn't in the past. Um, now, there is a flat percentage fee, and I want to say it's like twelve or thirteen percent. I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it's twelve and a half.
It's all, all the admin fees and the sale fee, which was seven and a half percent prior. Um, basically, the winning bidder pays govdeals, and govdeals takes all of their fees off that. Uh, twelve and a half percent or whatever it is, and then sends the, the bid amount to the township, so.
Okay, perfect.
We don't, we don't incur any of the costs as far as listing or uh, adminning that uh, transaction.
Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. Um, the only other quick question I had, it's not on my report, um, hearing uh, Mr. Talk about the Bureau of Workmen's Comp, um, excess money. Um, I wanted to ask their board their thoughts on possibly distributing that excess money. To each individual department on maybe a percentage of what. The workman's co- workman's comp costs are annually. Um, we know there's going to be workman's comp costs in the future. And why not redistribute that money to each department so that they can use that money to possibly offset the cost of workman's comp in the future?
Before you have that discussion of Mr. Holbrook's most recent request, let's go ahead and vote the resolution. So we get that behind us, and this again is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three to declare the two thousand and four dump truck as excess. And sell on govdeals.com. So before we vote any final discussion on the resolution. Okay, Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
And Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three is adopted. Now, let's move on. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make a first response, I guess. I, I feel like that, it's a very reasonable request, uh, Mr. Holbrook. I, I think. Um, it, it's an interesting thing, uh, I guess, Mr. Houston, I would, I would take some advice from you on this. Because that money's going to go into the general fund, is that correct? In excess, you know, the, the additional fund there?
You have the power to distribute it any way you wish, but if not doing anything besides where we are now, it'll go into the general fund.
Okay, and then once it's in the general fund, i- if we didn't parcel it now. What's the ability to parcel that to, uh, say, the road fund in the future for, for payment to workers' comp? Is that just something we can make a resolution as simple as that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, and so I, I guess that's something, uh, um, I, I guess from your perspective, Jeremy, if you want to add more perspective, absolutely, let's, let's chat it. But I guess you're, you're saying because the budgets are very tight in those, in the road and bu- road and bridge and, and the police. That this could help offset some of those costs and, and put you guys in a little bit better situation. Is that correct? Is that, that pretty much the gist of it?
Uh, that is, that is the correct statement, and historically, um, in my thirty-plus years here, the general fund. To my knowledge, has never paid the road department any money for uh, outside of our. Funds that we get our money from, so um, you know, that was the only reason I was asking for it upfront was. Historically, they've just, they've never had the money. The general fund has never had the money to, um, you know, they have the ability. To give the road department money, but they've just never had the money, extra money available, so. Um, that was kind of one of the reasons I was asking for it now, is, you know, getting it now, we can budget for it. You know, we can put that in our budget.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I, I think it's reasonable. I guess what I would, why would I would propose is, um. I, I would like to look at the general fund again, um, and make sure I fully understand, because I know we dipped a while. I think we've done okay the last couple of years, holding that steady. Um, and I do fully understand, you guys can put it to use for the purpose that. You know, refunding that money, we can use it again for the exact same purpose. Uh, but I guess let me look and, and is it okay? I guess two things, Mr. Houston, when we have our number twenty-seventh or thirtieth meeting, whatever it is here at the end of the month. Would we have the ability still at that point in time to take and, and direct the workers' comp uh, reimbursement at that point in time? Or we need to do that tonight?
You can, once I receive the money, if you don't do anything tonight, I will put it into the general fund. At any point in time, you can pass a resolution to move that money anywhere you want. As a transfer to a different fund. It doesn't have to be that money, and once it's in the jet, in the general fund, it becomes just part of the general fund. But you can always take money out of the general fund and transfer it to a special fund such as the road and, and bridge fund.
Okay, so I, I understand what I think. Uh, allow Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs to give some thoughts, and then I'll, I'll weigh in if, based on what they have anything to add. Before I, I respond fully.
Mr. Houston, can I ask a question?
Certainly, Mr. Cross.
Okay, so you know, a- as you know, that the uh, road department has, you know, continually needed funds, are always underfunded. The, you know, you're giving the CARES Act money, a big, a huge amount of money to the police department. Couldn't some of the uh, workers' compensation money be directed to the roads to help them out? Again, because they're always underfunded. They're, Jeremy never has enough money that he needs to maintain the roads. To be fair to the road department, again.
I'll just mention one thing. I think that's a, a fine idea. I, I would say, and you could agree, I believe that even allocating this full amount. Wouldn't make him sufficient or fair in this situation, but I, I do understand your point.
I have no problem putting a percentage of the money in the, in the road fund.
Can I, uh, can I jump in here, please? Um, so Mark Keener from Make-A-Road. Um, so I'd just like to, to remind the trustees that maintaining the cemeteries. Within the township is a responsibility of the trustees. And that the road department has been maintaining the cemeteries out of the road department budget, rather than the general fund. For what, probably twenty-five, thirty years, uh, which technically violates the O R C. Um, so I would suggest maybe at a minimum, if we're going to have some excess money going into the general fund. That uh, maybe Mr. Holbrook could at a minimum prepare an itemized estimate of how much it costs the road department. For their salaries, uh, benefits, uh, fuel, wear and tear on the equipment, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, each time they mow the township cemeteries, and maybe uh, the general fund could then. Pass that money along uh, on a monthly basis during the mowing season. And that would fulfill then the requirements of, of the trustees taking care of the township as per, or the uh, cemeteries as per the O R C.
I think that's a good idea. Jeremy's gone above and beyond in keeping the cemeteries mode. I think it's required, what, twice a year? And you guys do it weekly and keep it looking nice, uh, so you go well above and beyond. I, I agree with uh, both Mr. Cross and Mr. Keener. Um, that the more money we can give to Jeremy and the road department, especially for the cemetery maintenance they do, um, would be beneficial.
I'm gonna jump in here real quick. I think that we're discussing the budget in the end of December. Um, and I don't, I don't recall, Mr. Houston, I apologize if we have that money yet to allocate, have we got, received that check? So we haven't received it yet, so um, I don't believe that there's really any, I guess, haste and hurry to. Spend a check we have not yet received, so when we meet on the twenty-ninth or thirtieth. Um, if we could discuss it then, that would, that, that's what I'm all for. Not that I'm not forgiving you money, Mr. Holbrook, I, I have no problem with that, but just being able to look at it and sit down and maybe you answer some questions or. You know, talk about what percentage do you think, and you know, numbers I think would be beneficial, since it is the budget meeting anyways.
I'm fine with that, and I'm also fine with distributing that money fairly between the uh, different departments. You know, I don't know what the percentage is that the road department pays in workman's comp uh, fees. Uh, compared to the police, compared to the zoning, compared to the trash, you know, I have no idea, but um. That would be interesting to see those percentages uh, when we have that meeting um, on the thirtieth.
I guess just for a little bit of background.
Anything else?
The, the only other question I have, I definitely agree, a robust conversation later is, is more prudent, but. Why have we been not, uh, you know, within our lawful responsibility for the last thirty years? If this has been a situation, can anybody provide that perspective?
Well, I'm, I'll hop in here and say, uh, I believe last year sometime, it could even be maybe eighteen months ago. Uh, the purchase of a new lawnmower came out of, I believe, Jeremy, Mr. Holbrook, please correct me if I'm wrong, that came out of the general fund. And then when the old lawnmower was bought, the, that fund went back into. I'm, I'm honestly not sure which fund that went back into, but.
Back in the general fund.
It went back in the general, that's what I thought, but I didn't want to speak, speak um, incorrectly, so. I think that was how the, the trustees, um, I don't want to say worked around, but. Um, justify that in a sense, because the pay, the cost of lawnmower came out of the general fund.
The only problem with that was, is when the road department's mower was sold. That, that mower belonged to the road department, and the funds that it generated went to the general fund. Which I'm not so sure I agreed with that, but that's the way the board set it up, so. Um, but the, yes, the lawnmower, the purchase price of the new lawnmower was purchased. Um, with general fund monies, but when the road department's mower was sold, that money also went to the general fund to offset the cost of that mower.
Okay, I, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
To Mr. Holbrook's earlier question about the allocation of the workers' comp um, invoices. The police department gets sixty-nine percent, the road department gets twenty-one percent. The general fund gets six percent, and the trash fund gets three percent. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Mrs. Sewell.
Hello, uh, so I have added a couple of things to my report, um, that came up today. Uh, first, I do want to thank Lori for all of her help and support the entire time that I have been employed here. Uh, she has been a great asset to my position in me learning the ropes. And getting everything in order in my office, so thank you so much, Lori, and happy retirement. I hope to see you around. Uh, in old news on my report, uh, the new website is currently on hold, um, pending some things. I think Tyler's going to get to here in a little bit. Uh, the zoning commission, last month, I told you about a case that they were going to be seeing. They approved the case and it will be moving to you all next month. Um, the petty cash, uh, that you all approved last month, I did cash that check. And I got a lockbox for it that will be at the township building in my office. Um, so it is a box with a lock and a key, so um. If you guys need a copy to that, I can get that, but um, I don't know if that's necessary. Um, let's see. And I did not get the information on the postage machine out today. Um, I'm not sure how much of a priority that is to you all, um, so if you guys want me to continue to look into that, I will. Uh, the permits over the last month, I wrote in agricultural exempt on Dayton Germantown Pike. A shed on Mudlick in a new home that is pending on Brown's Run. Uh, the zoning commission will meet for their organi- organizational meeting on one nineteen. And today, the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, we decided on January twelfth. For their organizational meeting. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Sewell. I, I believe this comes to me, and actually, we already touched on, I wanted the, at the budget meeting, so that is off the, the agenda for me. Senior Center, I believe I touched on this last time, but I think it's always good to, to let the citizens know. Senior Center still is unfortunately not open. I just got an update. I reached out to um, Mrs. Ayersman, um, she knows Ayersman about. Um, the Senior Center, unfortunately, they have not eased any of the regulations for the. um, the senior center. Unfortunately, they have not eased any of the regulations for the senior center, so it is still not open. However, they are passing out, um, meals. So if you are a senior and you're interested in getting so there there are frozen meals and you can go and weekly pick them up. You just need to reach out to the city building, um, to the Germantown City Building and get your name on the list so that they can make sure that they have enough food for you. Um, so if you need that, reach out to them and they will, if you know this, another citizen who could benefit from getting those meals weekly, they do have that available. So I just wanted to let everybody know. And that is all that I have this evening. Sorry, Mr. Stubbs.
Just a few things. I'll be brief. A pool meeting was canceled. We had a board member resign, so we'll be looking at a replacement for that in the next month or so. Uh, moving on to the cemetery, um, Mark, Mark, uh, Heaton already mentioned it, but the ten thousand dollar payment was made for the, uh, western land at the cemetery. Uh, this Saturday, Dave Short from the Veterans Museum in Germantown will be, uh, placing re- wreaths on veterans, uh, headstones at the cemetery. I believe they have four hundred wreaths. They're gonna hit as many as possible in the cemeteries. And, um, that's at no cost to the township, and it sounds like they have a ton of volunteers coming. They've mapped out the the headstones of the veterans. And, uh, it sounds like they'll make this quick and of no, uh, financial burden to the township or the cemetery. And they will also be cleaning them up at the appropriate time. Um, first of the year, I'm assuming, um, once they've, uh, that their use has been met. I also would like to thank Lori for her twenty-nine and a half years of service to German Township. Uh, she she's fantastic. She's she's a wealth of knowledge. She she does a great job. Um, and she goes above and beyond for the township, and she will be greatly missed by all of us. But, um, I know she's looking forward to what she has planned in the future, and I'm excited for her. And I I hope to see her in the future, but definitely I'll enjoy these next three, three weeks or so with her here at the township. She's just a wonderful, fantastic person, and German Township has been lucky to have her for the last thirty, approximately thirty years. Um, with that, that can concludes my report. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more thing. Uh, we had a, I had a guy reach out to me wanting to rent space on the tower um, behind the township building. And I've I've reached out to Nathaniel Peterson. It's been almost a month. And I reached out again this past week, asking for an update and still have not received, uh, an answer from him on direction. But there's potentially a a company that is looking at leasing space on the tower. Hopefully Nathaniel will get back sooner than later, and this company can, um, be able to use our tower and potentially bring in revenue for our township. Uh, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Uh, on that, Mr. Stubbs, I think that's great news. I I had reached out to Mr. Peterson as well. You know, you were copied on the email, I don't know, a few weeks ago. He's yet to respond to me, and that's very unusual. Usually when I was emailing him early on, he was very responsive. So I don't know if we need to reach out to someone else and see if there's something we don't know about, uh, or, you know, some kind of circumstance there. So there's something to note. Um, we had talked about an employee lunch in. I I hadn't seen if anything went off with that. I just wondered if Mr. Heaton or, uh, anyone else had any information if they actually were able to host that and that's been taken care of?
They have scheduled it for this Wednesday, I believe.
Okay.
And they will be having it here at the township building.
Fantastic. Um, I've only got a couple of quick things. Uh, Christmas in the park. We, you guys may have seen some emails or stuff on Facebook on that Germantown, uh, in the parks. You know, the group had had put that on. We ended up having that, uh, Saturday. Um, that went pretty well. There was probably, uh, it's not overwhelmingly attended, but maybe fifty to a hundred cards, kids were able to come drop off cards for Santa um, in in, uh, NC, uh, Santa and Mrs. Claus. Even though we couldn't have a parade, we were able to still do that in, uh, the Memorial Park. So that was something nice. I was able to go on. Thank the park committee for putting that on and managing, organizing that. Uh, the dot gov, uh, piece, we had talked this at our last meeting. So this one is, uh, another complex thing, and this is what Haley was alluding to. When we got in and dug deep into the, uh, dot gov, uh, information, that four hundred dollars a year that we had approved last meeting would go to get a domain only. They actually don't do email hosting on dot gov. So what that four hundred dollars is for is for the recognition that you're a legitimate, uh, dot gov entity. Um, and that's more of a federally run, um, domain. Uh, they have a lot of security. There's several things we had to do to apply for it, et cetera, et cetera. And because it doesn't host the email, we assume that that's probably not something we want to move forward with for four hundred dollars a year. Um, Haley looked into GoDaddy because they also do, uh, email hosting as well as the web hosting that we've already approved in the past. She's working on transitioning to. Uh, she can come back with specific numbers, and it's gonna take a little bit of discussion there. Maybe in a special meeting, we can have, uh, discussion on this piece to move forward with more detail. But we can kind of give you guys some some guidance tonight. So, uh, um, a couple of things along these lines on the domain. So the domain is the ending or or the website that that we host this on. So today is germantownship, uh, dot tripod, dot gov or, uh, dot, dot com. Um, you know, Jurt Farmersville uses a dot US domain name. Uh, some entities obviously use the dot gov. Uh, I talked to Farmersville about it to some degree. And they they said that, you know, the dot US, even though it's really only for businesses, they don't really have strict mandates. So we could even do it dot US if we thought that was something really beneficial to us. Uh, but I'd also discuss, we can keep our current domain for free and move it over to GoDaddy, um, which would save us money, but we're also going to have to pay for the email hosting if we use, uh, GoDaddy. But the key is we can use our current domain for free, go to GoDaddy and just pay a monthly email hosting fee um, for each person that wants an email account. So we can avoid the four hundred dot gov, but there's going to be an expense with the, uh, with GoDaddy's email hosting. Now, their plans, uh, are basically six dollars to sixteen dollars per month, per user. Um, there is a promotional, uh, uh, benefit for the first year, it looks like, and it's less than half that cost. But after a year, I'm just gonna give you what it would be on a going basis, and just know the first year would probably be about half of that. Uh, so on a going basis, you can either get, um, a ten gigabyte per per user, um, email account, a fifty gigabyte, or, uh, I'm going to the other one right here. Hold on one second. Or Haley, you can chime in if you've got it handy.
Yeah, I do. Um, the third is a premium account, which includes the fifty gigabytes per user. Um, Microsoft three sixty-five Office and Microsoft Teams for fifteen ninety-nine.
Okay, that's right. So six bucks a month, you can get ten gigs for seven dollars a month, one dollar more, you can get fifty gigs. Or for sixteen dollars a month, nine dollars more than that second plan, you can get the same fifty gigs. But you also get, she said, a Microsoft Office benefit, which would eliminate our Microsoft Office plus our WebEx subscription that we currently have now. Um, I looked at Gmail, which is what I use. They offer fifteen gigs a month. They're slightly more than their basic plan, but definitely much less than their their middle level plan. It's only a dollar more. So we can look at it, but I guess my suggestion is probably use this mid-level plan. We can compare our cost savings from getting rid of Office subscriptions and the WebEx subscriptions and see if it would make sense to go to the premium. But I I'm not so sure, since it's per user and it's per month, that we can make up the difference there. Um, so we can come back. I think the input we wanted from both the trustees tonight is how many emails do we think we need at the township? And is this the route we want to go? Or do we want to keep using individual, uh, accounts that we have currently?
Yes, so basically, I, uh, I did a little bit of math, and I just need to know how many full-time and part-time police officers we have, because I wasn't sure on that exact number.
We have six full-time, and we have, um, one pretty, um, well, actually, I guess I'll say we have three part-time. Is that correct?
So nine total. Does that include chief and Sarge?
We have nine full-time, or I'm sorry, six full-time, including the chief and the sergeant, and three reserves or slash part-time. So nine total. The thing that would benefit us is to have a dot gov, because there are some, uh, federal um, sites that we can access, if only if we have a dot gov. Um, I can't think of it off the top of my head, um, but I can send it out tomorrow. There there's certain things that we can, uh, have access to if we were to have a dot gov that we don't have access to right now. So that's the only thing that I have to say, but nine people total. Well.
Uh, plus Shauna.
Yes, well, with Shauna would be ten, so.
Okay, yeah, I was counting her within you.
Do do all the police officers have emails now that the township can use? Is that something?
Typically, we have one email that everything comes into, and there's a reason for that, too. That way, things can be tracked. Um, things aren't easily deleted, uh, because we do have records retention that we have to follow. So, um, we've always done it that way. But if we were gonna get a a a dot gov, we could assign them if possible.
So I I know I kind of stumbled through it, so I want to make sure everyone's clear. The dot gov just would give us a a domain. Um, and so that's when someone wants to come visit the township, they would go to germantownship.gov. Um, but if we want to email, we would still have to go to like a GoDaddy and use that germantownship.gov and then host it on GoDaddy. Um, and GoDaddy, we would still have to pay this fee. So they would be, they would be additional, not maybe duplicative. But, um, I'm not saying not willing to do it, but it would be four hundred dollars plus whatever this monthly fee is, um, which is probably close, let's call it seven dollars a month times however many users we have. And and then we would have to decide, do we want each individual police officer to have an individual email that we pay for and, uh, and that type of thing? So somewhere in between, I don't know, probably minimum of seven or eight emails to probably a maximum of twenty-five emails is what we're talking about. Let's call it seven.
So actually, with that new number from Chief, I did a quick, um, thing. So maximum of eighteen, minimum of nine. And the the minimum, I counted three trustees, one fiscal officer, one for the road department, two for the police department, one for the trash, and one for zoning.
Can I jump in here real quick? Just because there was, um, and Mr. Holbrook may, I don't know if he's still on.
Yeah, yes.
We, um, joined something last year when he bought the new truck that if I recall, we were supposed to get some benefit or there was some discussion or something that we can look into that we might be able to get. I don't know if it's a dot gov, but something along those lines for email addresses and things.
So I know what you're talking about. I cannot speak to what specifically it was, but the plan that we signed up for for whatever we were doing at that point in time does not give us all of these benefits. Because I guess they have separate plans for different, I'll call them plans, because I don't know what the word that they use is. Um, but they have separate plans for separate things that you want to do.
Would that be cost-effective for us to look into a next-level plan, if you will, um, to see if that is a cost savings? Because I I'm thinking we got a dot gov email through those because that was the state purchasing things. I don't know enough about it, unfortunately. Um.
Yeah, I I thought so, too. And I actually reached out to, I think Jeremy and I might have had a conversation via email, and there was some information that he sent me and I reached out to them, and they said that we would have to purchase a separate plan. Because the one that we did for Jeremy was just so that we could buy and sell items on that website.
So I I guess at this point, because I feel like I'm I'm failing you, too, and not giving you enough clear information and and Haley and I can work together, what we probably should do is Farmersville didn't come back. I asked them how much they're paying for their email and for the dot US and those types of things, wha- wha- what all they've done. Um, we can reach out to maybe one of the other townships, too. I just, I knew, uh, the person that managed this in their department, so I I spoke with them. But, um, I I guess what I would say is, we know that there's going to be an incremental cost to hosting email, and so we need to think about that. Um, let us try to get a couple of solutions. I think the GoDaddy one makes a lot of sense because we're already going to be using them for web hosting. You got a general idea of how much it is. Let's think about how many people would want to provide, um, email addresses, too. I guess, Chief, I would ask for you to give your own opinion if you have one, one way or the other on that specific piece. The other thing is, I mean, this is one of those deals, you can imagine. I can send you, I'll send you guys the link to the GoDaddy. It's very clear how they lay out their different plans, but then you still have advanced email security options, email backup options, which are all additional costs. I mean, there's a lot of things to consider when it gets to this, and I feel like maybe talking to a few more townships to understand how they've done it. I think there might be something different, too. We need to maybe look into, Haley, on whether there's an ohio.gov one, because this was more of a federally sponsored dot gov. It was coming, it was giving examples of Arizona Township.gov and all this kind of stuff. So, I mean, this was a a a federal one, not a Ohio-based. I don't know if there's an Ohio base, like ohio.gov or anything. But, um, we'll try to look at some more options and see if there are more cost-efficient ways based on what other townships have done. Um, but but the bottom line is, you're probably looking at potentially up to a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars per month, which is a a rather substantial amount if we're talking about email hosting. And so, um, it may be helpful if we get some guidance today at this meeting, if there's like a threshold of pain that we're willing to tolerate um, as far as the the budget piece of it versus managing our own individual emails, which I I don't like and and don't want to continue doing. But I also know we've had the opportunity for many years to change this, and this has not been a decision anyone else has made, and I don't know if they ran into the same situation.
I'll I'll jump in here for a minute, Tyler, if you don't mind. Um, so Avra, Avra's, uh, kind of on the right track with the purchasing program that we signed up for when Jeremy bought the truck. So I looked into this a couple of years ago, and in order to get a dot ohh dot, uh, US or, um, yeah, dot ohh dot gov, I believe it is. Um, so that is an Ohio, state of Ohio, specific email. We had to be a member of that purchasing system. So then we have to go through and actually register that domain. And it's actually the state then that assigns us whatever our, you know, germantownship or GT, uh, MCO for germantownship, Montgomery County, you know, or whatever. They actually assign that domain. And then, uh, from there, then you still have to go through the email hosting. So, uh, Mr. Heaton, uh, there's emails in the account, um, that are, oh, gosh, probably a year and a half or so ago. Um, and if you just go up in your Outlook and do a search probably on purchasing and, um, maybe dot gov, um, for your search terms in the email, it'll probably turns up some email that I had with Montgomery County Purchasing and some people at the state. Uh, to your point, Tyler, yeah, this is exactly why I dropped it a year and a half ago, because it just got to be a big ball of worms, and, uh, I was not prepared to become the IT consultant for the township. So, uh, yeah, it's, it it is, I mean, it it can get rather unwieldy. Some something else besides GoDaddy I'd take a look at is get on networksolutions.com um, or netsol.com. They're kind of the granddaddy of hosting. And they're actually, uh, work, God, I can't remember the international organization that handles all the domain registrations. Uh, but, I mean, they've got some plans, too, that'll compete with GoDaddy. Um, again, they've been around a lot, lot longer than GoDaddy. Uh, so, and then with regards to a dot US, anybody can get that. So if you wanted a Tyler Rimmer dot US, I mean, you could go and get that. So really, it's, that's no different than a dot com or a dot org or anything else. So the only, only thing you've really got restrictions on in the domain world are the dot gov's, uh, dot edu. And, um, I think there's some hospital and pharmaceutical, um, domains that you've got restrictions on. But but anybody can go and get a dot com, dot US, dot org. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, if you go, I I appreciate that, Maria. Great background and very consistent, like dot US dot com. And it 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 tells you it's for, uh, businesses in the US, but they they have no restriction to your point. You can just apply, even though you're not a business or enterprise, but, um, You can just apply even though you're not a business or enterprise, but um, it's very consistent. I think the other thing to your point of like the dot gov. You know, Chief, you were looking for that. It is rather difficult. At first Haley was saying we need three people, a, a technical person, an administrative person and maybe a security person contact. And I was like, oh, I'll sign up for a couple of them and I'll go on and do this real easy. You have to fill out uh, all kinds of forms. You have to send cover letters. You actually have to have three individual people identified for each of those positions. They have to actively do certain things like log on to security accounts and do things. Th- this is not something that would be a very simple process. It is very involved. There would be multiple people needing to be involved. And they would have to do things at least annually along with the four hundred dollar fee to get the dot gov domain. And then you still have to go get the, the email hosting piece, which is separate, so. Um, it, it's not, it's not a simple process. And in fact, we really don't have anyone. That meet the qualifications of what they want for those uh, single point of contacts. It's just we would have to fill the bucket with whatever we had, you know, like I'm not, I'm not the IT administrator here, but I would. Fill, you know, fill that position and, and as, as Mr. Keener's mentioning, it's, I don't necessarily have that expertise, nor do we have an IT security type person, so. Those are a little bit more difficult and I don't know if it's just more larger townships or larger municipalities use those. Um, you know, maybe they're geared more towards states even, but um, at the end of the day, th- this has become a little bit more challenging. And we just need to understand it's going to cost more dollars in, in the future. If we want to keep going down the route. So I guess with that, you know. Mr. Stubs, Mrs. Reed, you have enough information. If you want to give us some additional guidance, otherwise we can continue going down this path.
So I do have some numbers that I put together, just a rough, if you guys want them.
Yes, I'm gonna jump in here though and say I have always believed that we need um. Emails that are township, you know, consistent. I've had people reach out to me specifically, sorry, Mrs. Sewell for. Zoning emails. They want to send in emails for or against different zoning cases. And what they said to me is. Different. And I, I agree with that. Um, it does become very difficult. When all four, five, six of us have different email addresses and domains and all of that stuff. So I think for our citizens, we owe it to them to have a consistent. You know, a read or what, whatever we come up with, um, just for contact purposes. So that they can email us and i- it does become very beneficial for us. To when we get a public records request, because all of it is right there instead of going to our personal email addresses. So I, I know it's a lot of work and I don't mind assisting or reaching out to other townships. Um, to see what they are doing, especially the smaller townships might be. Um, the better ones for us to reach out to, because they're probably in a similar boat to what we're in. Um, but I don't mind helping or assisting in any of that if um, if need be, but I do think it's very important and I appreciate all of your. Work.
So right now, uh, we have approved. The hosting of our website through GoDaddy, which is just over two hundred dollars a month. Um, now that is just for the website. Uh, currently, we have Webex that we're using right now, uh, which is a hundred and sixty-two a year. And then I have a Microsoft three sixty-five account. Which hosts, which has up to five, you can have five people on it. Uh, for ninety-nine ninety-nine a year. Now, the Webex and the three sixty-five, that equals just over two hundred and sixty a year. So with the Webex, three sixty-five and GoDaddy web hosting, we're already over. We're almost at five hundred dollars a year.
Help me out on GoDaddy. Wha- what was GoDaddy included in there for?
The GoDaddy was the approved cost for the web hosting for our new website. And that was just over two hundred a year. Now, when we switch a little bit and go to the email. Um, hosting portion of GoDaddy. The premium, the most expensive one. Includes Microsoft three sixty-five and Microsoft Teams, which would alleviate the Webex. In my current three sixty-five subscription. So if we had. Uh, let's see. The maximum. Figure.
I mean, ju- just the minimum ones though Haley, at nine users. Cause it's seventeen.
Users, yeah, is on, right under a hundred and fifty a year.
No.
It is per month.
Yeah, so it's, it's eighteen hundred and fifty dollars is just the minimum. So that's, that's where I was like, I think, I think we did that mid-tier one, which is only a dollar more than the minimum. You get the fifty gigs. It's seven dollars a month. At the maximum users, that's a hundred and thirty-ish dollars a month times twelve months, so fifteen hundred dollars a year. It's still pretty substantial. At the minimum users, if we, if we didn't do all the officers, if we just did nine, it's sixty-five-ish a month times twelve months. Seven, eight, a year, but you'd still have the Webex and the three sixty-five for two hundred and sixty on top, so there would be no change there. So it's just an incremental, I mean, minimum, I, I, I can't see it being less than, than eight hundred dollars a month. Unless we find somebody cheaper than GoDaddy and it could be anywhere up to two thousand dollars if you add any of the web security stuff that they're offering. Or if we went to a premium type package.
That's another thing that I was going to touch on is that if we want to, in any near future. Start accepting electronic payments um, for our. For any payments that we accept from the citizens, we'll have to have the security. Um, and the premium package with GoDaddy has that security built in.
So tha- tha- that's the piece I would say, Mrs. Reed, Mr. Stubbs, I mean. Basically, we're talking probably close to a thousand dollars a year. And, and I, I know it, this is something I absolutely want, I just want to make sure this is something we're willing to absorb. Before we go down the path much further.
Now, another question that I have about this, is this going to be an expense that's broken up? Per department, like the phone? And the electric? Or is it going to come straight out of the general fund?
I think that depends on who uses it.
Right, so like. If we did, you know, the email hosting. It would either be broke up by the people that have the emails, like if we did two emails for trash. Then trash would pay for two emails and police would pay for ten emails and so on.
But if the road department stayed with the emails that we currently have, then I'm hoping we wouldn't have to pay for any of it.
Well, I honestly, I don't think we would do the switch, Jeremy, without having all the township emails be consistent. That's the, the real point of it. Now, you can only have one for the, for the road department, um, but. It would still be one for the road department.
Okay.
But I, I, I think to that point Haley, I mean, that's a discussion, I, hopefully Mr. Stubbs chime in. But I, I think that a reasonable approach that may make it more palatable, because at the end of the day, I mean, a hundred dollar. Uh, charge per year in, in, in Jeremy's Road and Bu- Road and Bridge. Is much more palatable than, than the full eighteen hundred sitting in the general fund, I feel like.
And for me, it would be cheaper in my budget to go with the premium. Um, GoDaddy package versus paying individually for Webex and Microsoft.
That, that's a really good point. If you could do that for just one email, I don't know if you could do, break it up by domain, like. Your domain has one or two premiums and one or two, because. You understand what I'm saying? Because then they're gonna. I, I don't know that we can do that. It's something we can look into, because that would be a, a, a financial win for us, but I don't know that we, we would have that option. Okay. I feel like we probably beat a dead horse, but I'm not feeling we're, we're getting a lot. Surefire answer, and that's where it's a difficult topic, but Mr. Stubbs, you got any feedback?
I was just looking at Jackson Townships. Uh, they have, theirs is uh, J, I lost it. J C T W P, I think M C from Montgomery County. Uh, their trustees have a uh, the, the same email address, so it's. The whoever, Mike, I, I don't know if it's Mike Moyer, M. Moyer or whatever at. The uh. Consistent. Um. Uh, a name. Um, I don't have a problem with it. I, the cost, I mean, if we're looking at eighteen hundred dollars a year now, I, I. That's definitely a lot higher than where we had talked a couple of months ago. So um. I don't know if there's a cheaper way to go about it where we all have consistent email addresses, but I, I, I think our cost is starting to get pretty high. Um, maybe we should reach out to Jackson Township and see what they do. Uh, because I'm sure they're not paying eighteen hundred dollars a, a year uh, for what they have, and they have a nice website as well.
Wha- wha- can you tell us what was the ending to their either email or website? Wha- i- it's dot what?
Uh, let me, I just closed it. Let me look it up again.
Okay.
There, there's this J T W P M C dot com. So they're Jackson Township.
Township Montgomery County.
J T W P M C dot com, so they're just using a dot com.
Yeah, and, and so the main piece, I, I agree. I think we are all okay that we could avoid a cost with the domain. I mean, the dot gov piece, I know Chief had mentioned that and I don't want to dismiss that, but knowing that we're already getting much higher than we expected. I think the domain would be free just to that point. Now the email, we need to talk to them about how they're hosting their email. Mr. Reed, this might be something just really quick on the back of the jet meeting. Do you think we can just add a topic or nine note? I, I probably can't, Mr. Houston. You're gonna tell me I can't add any topic to talk about this with the other township, so. Okay, we'll, we'll take this offline. I think it's worth circling back with each one of those townships, trying to figure out what their solution is. I, I talked to Farmersville, I'll ask them more. He didn't have the fee amount. I asked him how much they were paying for email hosting, because they do have consistent as well. I'll find out what they're paying. I'll try to find out about Germantown and Jackson Township as well, and when we get back together next time, whether it's. Our next regular meeting, I'll try to have some more um, information on that cost. And in the meantime, maybe Haley, you can. Further with GoDaddy, see if we can have separate, you know, premium versus not on the same domain and get more hard numbers on whatever cost.
Okay, so question then, um. Lori's retiring and nobody knows how to write the code for the current email, or not email, sorry, website. So do you want me, do you guys want me to go ahead and? Do the website? Or?
I, I thought we had approved that piece and I don't, I don't know, but there's, there's no change in cost between. Adding hosting, email hosting to the website, right? It's not like we get a batch discount and maybe worth calling them and having that chat with them, like. If we did domain hosting and email hosting for X amount of employees, is there any kind of group discount we can get or? If not, I, I mean, I think we, I thought we'd had approved moving forward with the hosting piece, and I would say we need to accelerate that.
Yeah, so we did, you guys did approve that. I just put. Rolling it out on hold until we did this, because if the domain changed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right. Yep.
So do you guys want to uh, change, approve? Anything with the domain that we currently have, because I can do that, but it has to be done before I roll out. The website with GoDaddy.
Yeah, the, the only thing I say on the domain, I'm okay, most of it, except I think it has like dot tripod in there, which makes it very odd, right? Is that really true, like if it's? Our domain?
So when we go to our website right now, you don't see that, but I do think that that is. Accurate. That it, that it does have that in it.
Like when I'm looking at it, I've, I've got it up here. It says German dash township dot tripod dot com. And so.
Interesting.
Yeah, and so if, if it just said German dash township dot com, it would just be like Jack Township. I would be okay with a dot com, but. The dot tripod makes it, like if we could get away from carrying that over, and I'm, I'm sure they would say as long as it doesn't exist. They're willing to give us that domain, I would guess, so.
Correct.
I, I don't anticipate that existing, even if we had a new German dash township dot O H dot com, I would be fine with that, you know, doing something. I think we can get our own domain. I would just say, I, I would rather not have tripod in there. It seems pointless and confusing to probably carry that one forward.
Okay, so can I get, is there any? Sorry, what was that?
I was gonna say, I'm not seeing the same thing you're seeing when I go to our website. I'm seeing German dash township dot O R G.
Yeah, I've seen the tripod before, but I can't remember what computer or device I was on when I did see it. But when I look at it on my laptop, um, it just says dot one.
If, if you're going into design mode, if you work with Lori on that, Haley, you might have seen it there as uh, tripod being the hosting company, but. Um, all I'm seeing on my also is the German dash township dot org.
Okay.
It is what I see on my phone, but it's definitely not what I see at the top of Google Chrome. Google Chrome has, has tripod, but regardless, it's near here, there, but that's, that's what it says in my Chrome browser right now, as I look at it on my computer. My PC. So, um, but yeah, I guess I'm, I'm completely fine with German dash township dot org. I'm, I'm fine with that carrying forward. Um, as long as everyone else is, I would say. We ought to move forward, making sure that we have an ability to continue to edit our website.
Or do you want to see if I can change it, because there are three German townships in Ohio? Uh, do you want to see if I can change it at no cost to German dash township? M C dot org?
I don't think M C has enough descriptive information. If we're gonna change it, we probably need to say Montgomery County. And that makes for a long. Name. Which is why we probably have what we have now, but whatever you all do, we need the ability to be able to update. The website and if we're not gonna switch to GoDaddy. I'm not sure what we're gonna do in terms of being able to update.
Yeah, since the GoDaddy was already approved and I'll call them tomorrow to see if there's any. Price benefit to doing it all at once. Um, if not, I'll go ahead and get that rolling in the next week.
All right, in the meantime, I'll reach out to the other municipality, try to get some more information on what they're paying for web email hosting. Um, and uh. I guess if anybody has strong opinions on the uh. The domain name, we need to chat that at the next meeting, so Haley, just get all the information you possibly get on cost and how and. And maybe two or three domain examples and ask GoDaddy if they're available. To give us options there, and I'll try to come up with some other solutions on cost and that kind of thing. We'll get together, me and you. And see what our best options are, and we'll bring three or four more succinct options in front of Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs, as everyone thinks this is an important thing to do, so.
Okay, are we able to put any more um, agenda items on the, the thirtieth? The meeting on the thirtieth, since we can't add any to the sixteenth? Like if we were going to change the domain and wanted to de- decide.
We can add anything to the thirtieth meeting we want to add to the. To this notice. It hasn't gone out and it won't for a while, so we can.
What day, um, what day do we have till to add stuff to that agenda?
I have to send that out no later than twenty-four hours in advance, and I certainly want to do it more than that.
Right.
We're talking right around.
So the twenty, twenty-fourth?
That'd be good.
Okay.
And it can be something fairly open-ended. It doesn't have to be to discuss a domain name. It could be, you know, to discuss issues related to township website.
Okay.
Anemic, something very, very generic, but it, it, it opens it up to allow that conversation to occur.
Okay.
And it's not that I can't put it on to Wednesdays, but then I have to do a new notice. And you know, we had trouble the last time with the jet meeting about people complaining it was last minute. In terms of the notice going out, so I prefer not putting us in that position by trying to update that public notice tomorrow. Which would have to be done by six o'clock tomorrow. To meet the requirements.
Right.
Okay, I, I, my, my opinion is let's just go ahead and put that on there as a mean notice, and if, even if it's just a checkpoint, Haley, we might not have everything, but. Let's just add it.
Okay.
Okay, the la- last thing I have, this is the very last I promise is uh, finally, you know, we've talked a little bit about the BZA alternate position. Um, I got more than a handful of resumes, which was encouraging. I was glad to see the engagement from the community on that. Um, several of them were, you know, very, uh, you know, impressive resumes and and uh cover letters with their commitment to want to participate in the township, so I think that's great. Um, I would like to recommend one, I'd like to make a motion tonight to recommend Rachel Albert. Uh, just full disclosure, I do know Rachel, I've known her for a couple of years, um, probably two years actually, uh, she lives relatively close to me and has kids about the same age. Um, beyond that, I've seen her speak at township meetings, actually at. Uh, two of the zoning meetings um that I participated in in the past, and so I know that she's highly engaged. Um, her resume is extremely impressive, includes uh being twenty twenty nominated for twenty twenty nurse of the year for uh Kettering Health Network, so. She's a very well-respected in her field and highly intelligent, very logical, very reasoning. And uh we have that open BZA alternate position from when Valerie was appointed to the actual BZA board. And so I would recommend uh um appointing Rachel Albert to that BZA alternate position.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that.
Any discussion of the motion?
Yeah, I I have a couple of things, um. When I looked at the resumes that came in, just posted. Within a week or two, you had six applicants, um, or five. It's not till a month later, uh, Rachel. Reaches out to you and she's your neighbor, um, so I'm just a little concerned, uh. Because I know you, the me- the only meeting that I know that you came to prior to being appointed to this board was a zoning meeting regarding a zoning issue close to your house. Um, where you were opposed to it, which is fine. Um, but then when you got appointed to this position, one of the things you said is you wanted to bring industry into the township. Um, but then the only time you'd been to a meeting prior that I know of, you were opposed to the industry because it was too close to your house, so I. I I've appointed a lot of people to zoning boards, I've not known any of them beyond passing. Um, I've not searched out my neighbors, so I'm just wondering how you came to the conclusion of your neighbor when you had uh several other applicants that applied right away. And when they came in several, I I mean significantly, much, much later than the others.
So I I would, I would disagree on several of those points, number one. They didn't all come in within a week, there were several of them that trickled in later on, and you're right, Rachel's was the last one to trickle in. And if you want to talk that detail, I'm happy to talk that detail, you would notice that uh. I had reached out to one person that I thought had a very impressive resume, and it wouldn't have worked out with that person for particular reasons. Uh, but uh I did wait because I wanted uh someone different that I had thought had a diverse point of view and perspective. Um, someone that I thought would do a good job for several reasons, and that I had seen in action in these types of things and and. Uh, had some kind of background and understanding of, I think it's, I've done actually more due diligence than what I think a lot of people have done in this role before. Uh, to your point of not knowing anyone from Adam when you appointed them before, I think I know this person, I can represent that they will absolutely do well in this position. Uh, so I think that's very important, that if I'm going to give a recommendation that I fully endorse that person and understand their background and and where they stand on certain issues and topics and how they will manage situations. So, um, and when you talk about voting, no, I don't need to get into my personal history, but I'll say I was at multiple zoning or BZA. Um, meetings in the past, as was Ms. Albert, I've seen her speak there, and she's very succinct, logical, and has a great approach. Uh, I would say if you would review her resume, especially in comparison to the rest of them. There's no way, uh, if you're doing this in a logical, fact-based manner, you would not also stack her towards the top of the resumes that were received. And so I guess I would ask you, uh, why would you do it any other way, is it because someone else applied immediately that you think it's important to give them in a position because they were the first one in the door?
Of of course not, but when you have one that's significantly later, significantly later, several weeks, uh, almost a month, I believe. Um, i- it's almost like you handpicked this person um to and asked them to apply, I don't know if you did or not, and that's not.
So so a couple of things, Mr. Stubbs, I would ask you is. If you call them hand, I think that's what my job is, to handpick these people, correct? I think that's what I'm supposed to do, is appoint someone, me choose them, correct?
Well, it's typically not your neighbor to do the bidding of your specific community, but yes.
But let me ask you a question, what what benefit am I giving her to volunteer an unpaid position, what benefit am I giving her?
You're not giving her any benefit, but if there's any.
So I think that's the point.
But you're not letting me finish, what I'm trying to say is, you could be uh benefiting yourself with the decisions that you want, because I know there's been a driveway issue on houses that were built out in your neighborhood that was opposed by people out there. So you suppose, that's my concern, I I mean, the people that have been appointed um in the past. I've never sought out a neighbor, I've never sought out a friend, um, so I just find it odd of all the people. Uh, two of which were Germantown residents and um were not eligible anyway. Um, but to se- seek out your your neighbor seems a bit um. Strange.
So I'll just, and I don't need to justify this, but I'll clearly tell you, I did not seek out my neighbor in this situation. I did tell everyone here that I was waiting and would keep this open until I found a a candidate that I thought would do an excellent job. And uh I think that's exactly what I did, um, I would have kept it open even further if if Rachel wouldn't hadn't come forth and and said that that was something she was interested in doing. Um, what I'll also say is, y- you you make this as though uh there was only a couple of people at the meetings that I attended that were against the uh situations. You had a gravel pit surrounded by multiple people, and I know Mrs. Sewell was was there at that time, as so are you. There was probably a packed house and not a seat left, and it was standing room only, and there was only one person that was in favor of that, which was the person that owned that property and wanted to sell it commercially. So if you want to talk about that situation, let's represent the facts, the entire township that visited the board that that meeting was against that. And so I wasn't seeking uh Mrs. Rachel Albert because she aligned to my perspective, there was some um unique perspective. Uh, it's what was best for the township as seen by all the residents at that meeting, and so uh that's exactly what I think Rachel will do. As she hears as an alternate, these other uh cases that come before is that she will logically balance and weigh them out. And make a logical and reasonable situation for the rest of the Germantownship residents, which she did in both of those cases as well.
Is there any further discussion of the motion to appoint Rachel Albert as the alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Hearing none, I, sorry. Did someone try to speak? Did I hear someone for her speak?
I don't think so, I think that there's a slight echo.
Okay. So all in favor of the motion to appoint?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion's approved.
The the last thing on that topic is, uh, the way I read the O R C, and this is the topic I reached out to Nathaniel on and haven't had a response, is uh. Uh, the way I read it for both zoning appeals in the zoning commission is that, one, I've got it printed out here, it says something along the lines of, one, uh. One member of the board should roll off each year, so they should have terms as though one member rolls off each year. I think our terms are set up, uh, as far as I can tell, as best is documented, that we have two-year terms, and so we have two um from each board of zoning appeals. And zone commission roll off each year, which isn't the way I read it, no, I just want to get clarification from Nathaniel, which I have not. Um, but with the way it's set up today, is what I would say is we have four members, um, two from the commission and two from the appeals. Uh, that sit on board as well as some alternates who have their uh terms due to come up uh at the end of this December. And so I guess I would ask you guys for your experience in the past as to how you manage that, um, do you make a recommendation at the December or January meeting, or or do you guys? Um, open those positions and and what do you guys do in the past in those situations?
I believe that um, the Board of Zoning and the Board of Zoning Appeals are asked, the members are asked if that's something they're still interested in doing. Um, and then that is taken into consideration and then discussed and passed. Uh, organizational meeting, I believe the beginning of January.
It's typically done in December at the last meeting, uh, this meeting specifically. Um, so if there are people set to expire, uh, most of the time it would have been brought up tonight and reappointed if they want it, yeah. I mean, we've only had one in the my time here that we had to uh. Uh, asked to no longer be a board member, and that's was due to attendance. And other issues that they had caused, so uh typically it's, if the person's doing a good job, which I assume most of them are. Is to re- reappoint them, if if they so desire to be reappointed, some of them may not. I know some of the zoning commission were looking to get off in the near future at my last uh talking with them.
Okay, well, I guess to that point, and I, Mr. Houston, I'd appreciate if you would add to the the next meeting. Um, obviously not not Wednesday's meeting, but um something on this topic, I'll reach out to both of those individuals or those individuals and uh. And ensure that uh we're ready to make a decision on that the next meeting.
Oops, did I understand correctly, that's one for the zoning commission and one for the Board of Zoning Appeals?
That's right, on the actual boards, yes.
I have pulled up the uh minutes from December of last year. And. I don't see where we appointed um. The Board of Zoning at the, it was at the December meeting, um. I could be incorrect, but I don't see that it's right in front of me unless I'm missing a set of minutes here in my, um.
Which speaking, Mrs. Reed, are you looking at?
Oh, I was looking at the minutes from last December and uh January to see if um, when they were. At at what meeting they were um appointed. To see if I could find any of. That, I just have them all in a binder, so I was quickly looking through that to see if it really made a difference, if it makes no difference, I think it's great to talk about it um on the thirtieth.
It makes no difference, but typically we've tried to do it at the December meeting, so people's terms didn't expire at the general, at the regular meeting. That's it, just to make sure the term didn't expire.
Uh, that that makes sense, that makes.
Yeah, in the O R C, it just said that they'll serve until a suitable replacement has been appointed, if so, it. I think we'll be okay even if it's spread into January, but yeah, let's try to do it at the December meeting here.
Another thing is, both of their organizational meetings are not until after our first meeting of the month. Well, not the first meeting, the first regular board meeting. So the trustees' regular board meeting is the eleventh, the BZA meets on the twelfth for their organizational, and the zoning commission meets on the nineteenth for their organizational. So either way, it would be done before either one of those boards met the first time next year.
I have nothing further.
All right, um, I need to go over any new business that anyone has or any old business? Five, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned at nine oh five.
Thank you.
Thank you.